Good evening, everybody. We'd like to call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals July 7th to order. Would you please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance? The pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic which is one nation, united by the common good, with justice for all. Just a couple of housekeeping items. Please note, the emergency exits are through the door that you came in behind you to your left and through the very rear of the building. There's also restrooms located in the hallway behind you, again towards the exits. So, motion to approve the minutes from the town's last meeting?
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So today's public hearing is Volta charging, amending the ZBA's resolution April 7th, 2022 at 1328 Beekman Road. The applicant is seeking to amend the ZBA's resolution for two items, the color of the sign, background and letters, code section 15557D3D, and the internal illumination component of the signs, code section 15557B3A1.
Yeah, why don't we read this into the record? That way we can...
No.
Without talking.
Yeah. At this time, we welcome any public comment on the agenda items and resolutions.
Hi, good evening. Alec Glad from Cuddy and Fader. We are the representative of the town of Volta. As you mentioned, we were last November 7th where you granted area variance approval for five provisions of the code to allow two EV charging stations at the Stop &amp; Shop located on Beekman Road. For the public's benefit, they'll be located near the front of the store on existing landscaped islands. They are in the first row, but they are not taking anything that part of the spaces. And the towers are approximately seven feet tall, but the video displays on them are only four feet by two feet wide. And Volta offers free EV charging, and the digital displays are necessary for that aspect of it because that, through the ad revenue, they're able to subsidize the cost of the charge. And so after the April 7th meeting, we went to the planning board, and the town's planning board engineer identified two additional provisions that we may need relief from. So we did apply to you to amend the variances. And so basically, we believe that an amendment is warranted here because the board, in considering the first set of five variances, the... no design to the towers has occurred. They're the same base, it's the exact same plans that you applied, that we applied for when you approved in April. So intrinsically, as part of the ad approval, you considered the fact that the advertising display would have certain colors and that it was internally illuminated. And actually, one of the variances that you granted back in April was for the internal illumination aspect of the towers themselves. There's just a new provision that speaks to it. So we don't believe that there's any change in circumstances that would warrant a different determination from this board. So we're just here asking that the two provisions be added to the resolution of approval so that it is technically correct. Thank you. So happy to answer any questions of the board or the public after they have a chance to discuss.
Great. At this time, we welcome any public comments on the agenda items and the resolutions. Please. If you could please state your name and your municipality, and you have three minutes.
My name is Bill Crane. I live at 254 Gardner Hollow Road in Port Quag. I heard the presentation at the planning board. This charger will not last too much for the cars. When it was presented at the planning board, they said the idea, the applicant said the idea was to, for cars, to make it part of their day, their shopping day, this like from one shop to another, because the charge itself is very, is very small and won't last long. They didn't research the town. This town, you go to Stop &amp; Shop, you don't go to next door to the next door, and next door to the next door, and so on. But you go to Stop &amp; Shop, and there's Dunkin' Donuts, and that's it. It's a very different, very rural area. They've asked for several variances. The project goes against the nature of the sign codes, which try to have it blend in with the rural area, nature of our area. And it violates the comprehensive plan. As I understand it, this board is supposed to follow the comprehensive plan. The main point of the comprehensive plan is to preserve the rural character of our town, to preserve the rural character of our town, not internal flashing signs. This is not Las Vegas. We don't want illumination, flashing signs going all over the place. They're putting them on islands, which is trying to be sort of rural in itself, little islands with trees. Now, we're gonna have right in the place where the parking lot is, is trying to blend in, they're gonna put these electronic signs. I think it's visual, it's a real visual problem, and I don't want them in our town. I know a lot of my friends don't want them in our town. And I think that the comprehensive plan should, should matter, it should be your guide, and this project never should have got off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. This is going to be entered into the public comments section on record. The individual couldn't be here tonight, but it was submitted on email earlier today and was brought to our attention not too long ago. The letter is from Susan Glavitch of 74 Limehill Road in La Grangeville, dated today, July 7th, 2022. Dear members of the ZBA, I'm writing to express my opposition to the variances needed by Volta LLC to install two large digital billboards in the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot in areas of high pedestrian traffic. The signs are in violation of many, at least seven, sections of town code. Once the variances are granted, Volta LLC will have full control of what is being advertised and how the content within the boundaries of the signs is presented to pedestrians entering the grocery store. Pedestrians will have no way to avoid exposure to the advertising content due to the billboard sign in proximity to the doors of Stop &amp; Shop. Volta's offer of attaching these signs to Level 2, excuse me, Level 2 charging stations is seductive. The argument in favor of the signage is that residents will have access to a green technology. But the bigger issue is that the town would be giving a national company, not a local business, free rein to advertise their content to consumers, Beekman residents, without town oversight. Level 2 charging stations do not provide a substantial enough charging capacity for the town to relinquish control over its signage. Variances are forever. Once granted, there is no way to go back. I hope the members of the board see that this is a decision to not be taken lightly. Electronic billboards are not the type of signs that align with the Beekman comprehensive plan of maintaining the rural character of the town. Since I am not able to attend the meeting tonight, I would appreciate that my thoughts be entered onto the record as part of the hearing. Sincerely, Susan Glavitch.
Sure.
Are you familiar with the charging stations at another supermarket, Tops on La Grangeville, Route 55?
No, I am not. I'm sorry.
Let's see, let's see, I was wondering if you were part of that. Those two or three charging stations are at the end of the parking lane, not at the entrance. You have seen them?
I've seen them.
They are fairly small in terms of the visual. I don't remember, I mean, I didn't sit up long enough to look, but I don't remember seeing flashing signs.
They almost look like Tesla chargers.
Oh.
They're small, they're small. They don't have billboards.
They don't have, okay.
Yeah. Volta's model is different. They offer it for free, and how they are able to do that is...
Gotcha. So those are not yours, they just strictly the Tesla?
Yeah, yeah. And the signs here are not flashing, they're actually static images. There's just a refresh rate, so it'll cycle through different advertisements. But they're not, they're not moving, they're not video, there's no sound.
Oh, they're not?
No, no, no. No, it's, it'll just be a static image. So there might be a series of static images that refreshes, so it cycles through different advertisements, but, but it's not like those, like, you know, those displays that are going on gas pumps now?
Gas station.
Yeah, it's not that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a digital sign that throughout the day, there'll be multiple signs. So there's, yeah, no video, no sound, no flashing lights in it actually. So at night, when it starts to get dimmer outside, it actually, the charging power dims the light that it's emitting from it. So they are very low impact, and they're oriented just towards the pedestrians, those who are using the station to charge, and those people that are walking in and out of the store.
How long does that, I don't have an electronic car. How long does it take to actually, I mean, most people go in the store for about an hour. How much charging are they actually gonna get?
So you're looking about 20% is...
20%.
That's the average time.
If most people live around here that go to Stop &amp; Shop, they're gonna charge their car at their house, I would assume.
Yeah, so this is intended to be an amenity and to encourage kind of EV driving, but also Volta provides a benefit, like they have a neighbor business advertising program where they encourage nearby businesses to actually advertise on those towers. So like, I guess Dunkin' could have an advertisement, or there's a beverage barn across the street, they could put theirs on there to try to encourage businesses there.
Because there's, there's not a lot of businesses around here, so how much, I mean, there's Davis Cars, there's State's Grill, there's...
Yeah, it could be national brands.
There's not that much.
Like Starbucks or...
Well, we don't have a Starbucks. We have Cumberland Farms and Dunkin' Donuts, and you pretty much see them when you're on 55.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, you know, whatever company is one of them.
I'm saying, there's not a lot of businesses to gain exposure from your board because there aren't a lot in this town. So I, so it's really just helping you guys, actually. I mean, it's not really helping local businesses that much.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, but it does help, you know, EV drivers and residents who have EV cars. You know, and just to re-center the discussion a little bit, it's whether the benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment or harm to the neighborhood or community. There is no neighbor, there is no harm to the neighborhood or community. These are going in an existing parking lot on islands for a big supermarket that's not visible from 55 or Beekman Road. So there really is no detriment or harm, regardless of all the advertising stuff that's just, that's going on.
One minute.
Sure.
Your closest set of, where, where is it compared to around Beekman, or what's your closest station that you've been to?
That's a good question. There's one in Ridgefield Stop &amp; Shop, which might be...
Where?
Connecticut Ridgefield, it's probably like 45 minutes away. They've gotten a bunch of sites approved in Connecticut, not too far over the border, but right now, I think a lot of it is down in Westchester. I know they did apply for one at the PBC Galleria Mall, but I don't know if that's approved yet either. So this is a very new business model, and they're still building out their network.
Because we do have residents with these grounds, I'm going to ask, what made you choose Beekman?
So Volta partners with Stop &amp; Shop.
There you go.
So wherever there's a Stop &amp; Shop, they're, they're trying to build out. So, you know, we're working on one in Washington, maybe.
But this is not a super Stop &amp; Shop. The super Stop &amp; Shop is off of 44, down near the town of Poughkeepsie. They have their own gas station. They don't have any chargers, and that gets a heck of a lot more customers than this little Stop &amp; Shop here. I, so that's why I don't, I'm kinda, I don't understand why they would pick the little town of Beekman and not a big town like the town of Poughkeepsie, which gets it from all walks of life, Poughkeepsie, town of Poughkeepsie, or, you know, all around there, near Vassar. That's got so much more customers than to come to this little itty-bitty town that doesn't have a lot of businesses, where there's tons of businesses over near the super Stop &amp; Shop. I just, I'm, I'm kinda not understanding that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what their business decision was for, for choosing this site.
I think they maybe didn't do their homework. I'm just, I'm just thinking because this is a little itty-bitty town.
So just, just to read, kind of focus our, our intent here, and you're not bound by this decision. The point that the zoning board had given Volta variances, thinking that, okay, they were not gonna be able to move on to the planning board and ask for approvals there. The planning board gave them conditional approval, but sent them back because whether it was our misreading or some, somebody missed these two provisions, which they probably needed to apply for, and you probably should have pulled them to apply for. So we've given them approvals, doesn't mean we need to give them, give them to again for these two. We've kind of made a record from the last two or three meetings that they appeared in. So again, that, that part's up to you. What, what they're asking for now is, is an amendment to the previous resolution that was approved.
Alec, if you can refresh my memory on the location of the, of the charging stations?
Yeah.
I know they're in the, obviously, the Stop &amp; Shop complex. When you pull in and the, the store entrance is on your, let's say, right-hand side.
Yeah.
Where would the charging, I, I don't have the photos or anything in front of me here.
I have an actual set of plans.
I greatly apologize.
Yeah, I have an actual set of plans, if you want. Yeah, it's, there's two. One's by that first drive aisle, and the other one's kind of past the entrance.
Yeah. No, I, I remember, because the hand, when you walk, when you go in, it's on your right, the handicap spots are right across from the entrance, and their spots would be right across from the exit, which is handicap and what?
Yeah, we're, we're like outside of where the handicap spots are. They're more in the middle of the drive aisles.
And you said one of the features of the internal illumination is that at dusk through the evening hours, it dimmed?
Yeah, it responds to the ambient light, so it, it dims.
And it's not flashing, it's not, you know...
Nope.
...to be distracting to any driver or...
Nope. Yeah, the advertising isn't intended for motors anyways, but it is just a static digital image.
They won't be big enough with, I'm sorry, because I gotta raise my hand. They won't be big enough where a person can't see another car coming. Will they block any, you know, when you're pulling out, sometimes people, you know...
Yeah, I would say no, no more than the existing trees or bushes that are on the landscaped islands. Because they, they are kind of turned at an angle to kind of make the profile thinner.
And just, raising my hand again, just, so you said you're, you're working with Stop &amp; Shop?
Yeah.
So they gain, obviously, something from this also, I would assume?
Yeah, they probably have some sort of lease agreement to lease the space for the...
Oh, so you're leasing, you're leasing the space from Beekman?
We would be the tenant of Stop &amp; Shop.
I just, like I said before, Stop &amp; Shop's little. The other one's huge. I mean, it's, not so much. So that's why I just don't understand why, no offense, but why it'd be wasting their money putting it here versus somewhere else. It just doesn't, it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer to that.
They would make sure, I don't know what they're charging. They may wanna look into a different place. I just, I, I wish I, you know, when, when you got the letter and this nice gentleman spoke, I...
Great, thank you, Alec. Thank you for your comments. We're gonna, at this time, close the public comments section of the meeting. And, motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You guys can discuss that. Okay. It's on the record, obviously, and I take your vote on that amendment. So town board discussion on the, so again, the two items that are being discussed are the color of the sign and the internal illumination.
I know you kind of have to, yeah.
Do you still have that picture?
Yeah, I know.
May I?
I wish I thought about this.
Is this supposed to be fine or...
Yeah, no, you guys, you guys should speak up. You guys should put the conversation on the record.
From Mr. Spurons, I have a photo that was submitted back when the original variance was discussed.
Yep.
And would you say this is accurate, correct?
I believe, yes, that was one of the photo simulations that we might have submitted.
So there is no flashing? No, it's not? What I'm saying is, to me, looking at that does not look intrusive.
Yeah, again, it's, it's a photograph, so you're not gonna see any moving video, but the, the way that this is positioned is at an angle, so who's ever parked in these spots will be able to see any oncoming traffic.
Okay.
Or, or folks. Now, I don't know who's gonna walk over a curb to get to their car, but you never know. But the way it's depicted in this photo, it seems pretty reasonable, a reasonable positioning for the...
I mean, the one advantage is, you have parking lots that are very well lit, so it might light up a little bit more.
The parking lot is horribly lit.
Very hardly lit, especially in the winter, when you see ice.
Yeah.
So that's the, that's one benefit.
Yeah, and I double-checked, that's a, that's a photo simulation that we submitted as part of our March 18th package.
Yeah, yeah.
Kyle, do you wanna see this?
And these two variances are still not visible from the road?
Yep.
Yeah, the, the parking lot and the building itself are both substantially tucked away from County Route 9, which is Beekman Road, Street 55. You can't even see the building from either any position on Beekman Road or County Route 55, let alone see these particular charging stations. You literally, you'd have to go inside and get into the parking lot to see these charging stations.
So basically, these two variances would not really affect local traffic?
They're not gonna affect...
The pedestrian volume is the shoppers. I frequent this location, and the most I've ever, you know, July 3rd at 3:00 p.m., and, you know, on the day before Memorial Day at 3:00 p.m. is the most, most active I've ever seen, the location here. So in terms of high pedestrian traffic, I think that's very, very well managed from, from the volume of vehicles. Parking lot is, I, I work from home, I go to this, I go here a lot. I rarely see it more than 50% full. So, you know, whether, whether the, you know, change, whether, whether this, you know, variance granted would, would change the character of the neighborhood, be a detriment to nearby properties, I think we all agree that probably not. Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance, it seems like a variance is needed based on town code.
I think that just, please, what happens if you, I mean, you kind of have to allow it because we already passed the zoning for the prior. By opening that, does that let other people get like billboards that they want in other spots?
No.
Are we opening this to more things?
No, so when you, when an applicant applies for an area, they're, it, that is for that, it stands on its own merit.
Okay.
So it's, somebody, you know, somewhere down the physical road can't then put something up because we put in a variance to an applicant here.
Okay. Like Donald General's not gonna turn around and start doing that, too.
That person would have to come to us asking for a variance if they wanted to do that.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying. You have Donald General coming, you got, you know, you got a bunch of, not a lot of businesses, but you got them. And what happens if all of them decide, well, you know what, hey, I wanna do that. Hey, I wanna, now you have a whole street full of chargers.
So it could happen, I mean, it could happen. It could happen without this application, you know?
It could.
All those businesses have that right to, to come and ask us for a variance, and then it's up to you, you, you as a board, to, to, you know, to weigh the benefits and, and make a decision. It's gonna be decided on a case-by-case basis. And that, and that's your job as, as the zoning board.
Am I allowed to ask him one more question?
Sure.
You, well, they are leasing this to you on a year-to-year basis?
I'm not sure what the lease terms are, because Volta handles that directly.
Well, let's say it's a year-to-year basis, and, and it's not panning out for whoever wanted it there, and it's decided then to get rid of them.
Yeah.
Who does that?
Volta would take it up.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, these, this is valuable and, they're not just gonna leave it there if it's not working.
I mean, if it's not making anything for money for anybody...
They'll, they'll move it somewhere else.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, just check it.
Oh. Sorry, I'm sorry. 55, I think there would be a, a substantial, um, variance request, which I guess, you know, given that, given that nature, I don't, I think we're all in agreement that this request is not substantial, given that it's tucked away, it's not visible to anybody except the folks who are shopping in the supermarket.
And you can choose not to look at the billboards?
Correct, correct, correct. Uh, I think, given our discussion, the variance, uh, won't have an adverse impact on the environment or the neighborhood. And I think we can, I think based on our conversation here, the difficulty was not self-created. This is a charging station for a green, um...
You can't hear.
Oh. Uh, sorry, this is, I'm sorry. Yep, yep. My, my apologies. My apologies, Mr. Crane. We were discussing the, uh, the variance having an adverse impact on the environment or the physical conditions in the neighborhood. And through our discussions, we came to the conclusion that given it's tucked away substantially from Beekman Road, County Route 9, and State Route 55, that it doesn't, uh, have an adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhoods, nor was this difficulty self-created.
On that note, Mr. Chairman, then, um, you may want to entertain a, a motion to amend the April resolution and grant the applicant, uh, area variance from Section 155-57. D3D and Section 155-57. D3A1.
So at this time, I'd like to motion to amend the resolution of April 7th for items A and B, color of the sign, background in letters, and internal illumination. Again, 15755, one, sorry, 15557D31.
Hold on a second.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Uh, motion passes. Yeah. Okay. So I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone who came today, and safe travels home.